Can I ask you also to make sure your mobile phones are switched off? This is a public speaking meeting. Members of the public, just as a reminder, this is a meeting in public, it's not a public meeting, therefore I hope you can constrain yourselves and not demonstrate feelings one way or the other.
I don't think they're going to riot.
Yeah, no riots allowed now. Let's move on to the business. Minutes have been on the table for the last half an hour. Is it your wish I sign them as a true record of that meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. Apologies for absence. Emma?
Thank you, Chairman. We have apologies from councillor David Round.
Thank you very much. Declarations of interest, Emma?
Number for the meeting.
Councillor Edwards?
Apologies from councillor Hall, he's going to try and make if he can.
Thank you very much. Questions from members of the public, Emma, if we had any? Sorry. Councillor Parker?
Thank you, I have a declaration of interest as a member of Hazelmead Town Council Planning Committee.
Ditto.
Thank you very much, both. Elizabeth, turn to you now for any relevant updates, government guidance or legislation.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, very briefly, since your last meeting, the government has issued three pieces of new guidance. Firstly, it has updated its gypsy and traveller planning policy. This includes several minor amendments, but importantly, this reinforces that local authorities should now very strictly, as opposed to just strictly, limit new traveller site development in open countryside, that is away from settlements. The definition of gypsy or traveller has been amended to require a clear alliance with a nomadic life, and the policy emphasises that subject to the best interests of the child, personal circumstances and unmet need are not likely to clearly outweigh the harm to the green belt, i.e. would not amount to very special circumstances. Secondly, the NPPG planning guidance has been updated in relation to unauthorised encampments to stress that an absence of authorised sites does not mean that a council cannot take action in relation to unauthorised sites. And thirdly, the government has issued a new planning policy statement, which is effectively an update to the NPPF, stating that intentional unauthorised development in the green belt can be a material consideration to be weighed into the assessment, in addition to the existing tests of inappropriateness and openness. But that last point is interesting because you'll be aware forever, we've been advising members that the fact that a development has already taken place cannot be given any weight, and you need to assess it on its merits as if it isn't already there, rather than finding harmful because somebody's already done it in advance of planning permission. In this one case, where the appropriate circumstances arise, you would now be able to give weight to the fact that development has been carried out in advance in the green belt, i.e. that it's unauthorised, providing you can be satisfied that it had been intentional. So this is quite unprecedented and a new line of planning advice to us as planning authority, and it'd be interesting going forward as to how this unravels itself and what weight we advise you to give to it. I don't profess to be an expert in this yet, councillor Mullin, but will answer your question in due course, but I can advise you that none of the items on tonight's agenda are directly affected by these changes, and they're for members' information only at this stage, and I hope that's helpful. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Mullin?
Very briefly, what was intentional? You don't build buildings accidentally, so clearly, what's the intention getting at? People knowing that it was unauthorised and doing it despite being warned, or what?
I think the advice is actually quite light on how we interpret it at the moment, and that will only be unraveled through appeals and through the courts, but I suspect it will need for the council to demonstrate that an applicant has carried on building in the knowledge that planning permission is required, either because it's had warnings already, or that there is some other evidence that they were aware that it was unauthorised when they were carrying out the works. I don't know whether Erica wants to add anything to that. Yes, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Moving on to the application for planning permission. Site inspection, little error there, cut and paste doesn't always work, the agenda is wrong. If there are any site visits required, they will take place on the 27th of October. Let's move on then to application A1, WA2015, Bleak, 1549, 27th High Street, Hazelmead. And Louise?
Thank you, Chairman. This application is for the erection of a single-storey rear extension to form a self-contained office following the demolition of the existing extension, and the change of use of the first and second floors of the existing building from retail storage in use as A1 to form three dwellings, and the use of the roof of the rear extension as a terrace. The site is located on the western side of Hazelmead High Street. There is also a rear access to the property, accessed on the southern side of West Street, between numbers one and three, West Street. The site is located within Hazelmead Town Centre and is within the central shopping area. The site is surrounded by a mixture of commercial properties with some residential above. As you can see from the aerial photograph, the site has been extended to the rear, as have another member of other properties within the parade. There is public access to a public car park to the south of the site, here. This first photo shows the front of the property, taken from Hazelmead High Street. This second photo is taken from the car park to the south of the site, where you can see the existing extensions here in the background. And this final photograph shows the access between numbers one and three, High Street. This currently serves the rear of the properties fronting the High Street. This photograph is taken from the first-floor entrance of the adjoining property, to the south, looking towards the existing extensions. This one is taken towards the rear, looking at the rear service yard for the retail unit. This photograph is taken in the accessway at the rear of the site. The entrance to the site from the rear is just here, at the end of the accessway, on the left-hand side. The existing property is unoccupied at present, but has an established A1 use on all three floors. The rear area has historically been used to service the retail unit. These plans show the existing elevations, side and of the rear. Two-storey rear element, which is shown here in this plan, is proposed to be removed as part of the proposal. The building is proposed to be extended at the rear at ground floor level. This extension would have a depth of 8.5 metres and a width of 6.5 metres. The existing ground floor would be retained as A1 retail space, and the rear part in the extension is proposed to be used as office space and WCs serving both the office and the retail unit. The flats on the upper floors would be accessed from the rear accessway, accessed from West Street, and through here at the rear. Bin storage for the flats would be proposed here, fronting the accessway. Bin storage for the offices would be here under the stairs, and the existing arrangement would remain in place for the retail units, where bins are stored in the accessway and serviced from here. No car parking has been provided on the site, taking into consideration the level of vehicular movements and demand for car parking for the existing established A1 use across the three floors, and the level of demand for the proposal, which is likely to be similar, along with the highly sustainable town centre location and the adjoining car park to the south. This arrangement is considered to be acceptable in this instance. This area at ground floor shown hatched is excluded from the application site. At first-floor level, the stairs would lead to a communal roof terrace, and then access into the main building, which would provide two one-bedroom flats at first floor. At second-floor level, a two-bedroom flat would be provided, accessed by internal staircase from the first floor. These images show the south and north elevations. The extension would be positioned here, to the rear of the existing extension. The terrace would be positioned on top of this, and a brick wall would be positioned adjacent to the extension and the terrace. These plans show the rear elevations. These are the existing extensions which are in place. This one shows the rear extension with the terrace above, and this one shows the image from the accessway, which shows the doors to the bin storage and the gated entrance into the site. There would be no alterations to the front elevation as part of the proposal. Can I draw members' attention to the update sheet, which corrects an error on page seven of the agenda, and outlines that the width of the extension is 6.5 metres? It also corrects a second inaccuracy on page 20, where paragraphs 133 and 134 of the NPPF are not considered to be engaged, because it is considered that the proposal would not harm the special interests of the conservation area and would preserve its overall appearance. Additional conditions are also recommended, requiring a construction environmental management plan, and no burning of materials on site, and removing permitted development rights from the office area of the proposal. In conclusion, the site is in a sustainable town centre location and would bring a vacant building back into use. It would have an acceptable design and appearance, and an acceptable impact on the adjoining neighbours. Furthermore, the proposed access at the rear is considered to be acceptable. The matters of technical opinion are the principle of the development, housing land supply, highways issues, archaeology, biodiversity and the effect on the SPAs. The matters of judgment for members' consideration are the impact on the visual amenity and the appearance of the conservation area, the impact on residential amenity, and the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity and play space. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Louise. Excuse me. This is a public speaking item. I asked Mr Colin Kylie to make your pitch, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I'll be brief, just a few points to make, just to endorse what the officer has said in the report. One thing that is in the report is whilst this application follows on from a refusal of planning permission, this is a materially different scheme, and so the consideration is not whether previous reasons for refusal have been overcome, but whether this application is considered acceptable in its own right. Officers obviously agree that it is. As we've heard, the proposals will assist in meeting the council's housing land supply requirements, and I note on the late sheet that there was a comment from Hazelmead Town Council has been referred to, who questioned the provision of car parking. One thing I would like to add, in addition to what the officer has said, is that if you were to consider the level of car parking required under the council's own standards, and compared it to what would be required under the proposed use, there is no change. Both require nine car parking spaces. Of course, being in the location it is, none can be provided, so there is no change in terms of the car parking requirement, never mind demand. And of course, there's no objection from Surrey County Council, the Highway Authority. Finally, just with regard to the proposed condition on removal of PD rights, I think there's an error in that condition, it refers to use class B1C, I think it should be referring to B1A offices. Thank you.
Thank you very much, indeed. Members, open it up to yourselves, please.
I think the only issue is the car parking, from my perspective. Clearly, economically, the absence of car parking will have an effect on the price, I would imagine, and that would help the occupiers to fund purchasing car parking. Can I ask whether we know whether Waverley is still selling season tickets for the High Street Car Park?
I can see councillor King shaking her head furiously.
If I may. Not in the High Street Car Park, but season tickets are available for Chestnut Avenue and Tanner's Lane.
I'll ask the officer just to bring us up to date. We've got a number of shops that are being converted into accommodation in Hightown Beacon Hill under prior approval. It's a government legislation, there is no car parking on five of those units already. So could I just ask the officers to comment, give it its proper name?
Yes, so in relation to the prior approval applications, you can take into consideration the impact on the highway network. However, when you look at the impact of a particular proposal for residential units, you always have to compare it to what could be on the site. So in this example, it is an A1 unit, it is vacant at the moment, but it could be occupied at all three floors for A1 purposes, and generally for retail, the vehicular movements in association with the retail unit are higher than those associated with the residential unit, as is the car parking. So it is very difficult to object on highway grounds when the proposal will have less of a demand, or a similar demand, to what exists on the site at present.
Thank you. Councillor Mullin, come back and then answer Edward.
Yes, thank you. Can we unpick that a bit? When a retail unit is on three floors, is it being envisaged that all three would be separately used by different retailers, each with their own car? Is that the comparison that's being made?
No, although they could subdivide the unit into three floors without planning permission, so that could be a consideration, but it's more that the three floors could be used as an A1 unit in itself, and that demand would generate a certain number of vehicles from people coming to shop in potentially all three floors of the building, even if it is just one, you know, retail establishment.
Sorry, coming to shop or working there? If you're coming to shop, it doesn't matter, they're transient users and there's a car park for their use right next door. Talking about coming to work, then you've got demand on the parking supply during the working day. But I'm just puzzled by this reference to the fact it's three floors already. We're talking here about people who will be probably walking to the station, but most people will want to have a car, because at weekends they want to go somewhere else. And it's what happens to those cars during the working week that is the obvious concern, because Hazelmead has a parking problem, as we all know. So I get the uncomfortable feeling that we're sort of brushing this one under the carpet, and the mere fact that the government has produced legislation which allows one route to brush it under the carpet doesn't actually help me here, because as far as I can see, I mean, they're one-bedroom flats, but presumably a couple could live there, so it's not entirely... And a two-bedroom flat as well. It's not entirely unreasonable to have six extra cars coming in, and you do wonder where they're going to actually park during the working week, if their owners are elsewhere.
I'm sure councillor King would give you an answer to that one, but councillor Edwards?
No, I have no comment. Councillor Mullin has expressed what I was meant to express.
Councillor Corbyn?
Yes, just in the absence of a queue of people wanting to speak, I would just like to make a general point, that I do welcome this sort of development, I welcome it in all our settlements, because I would much rather have redundant buildings in the centre of any town being brought back into an active use, than see bolted on to the edge of all our settlements, you know, inappropriate development. So in a small way, I know it's only two, but I would much rather see this, I think it's a much more effective use of buildings. I take the car parking issue, but we know what the government guidance is on that, but I think, you know, to have a vibrant use of all our properties in the town centres is something we as a borough, you know, should seek as often as possible.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor King?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I've changed the subject away from car parks, actually, and I'm back on my old hobby horse of dustbins. The plans that we saw indicated four bins, where in fact, and there's not much room for anything else there, as far as I can see, whereas in actual fact, we will be needing to accommodate a minimum of six, three flats, two bins each. Is provision being made for that, please?
Carry on. Louise?
The bins that are proposed are in fact larger than the normal household bins that would be for a normal house. Our environmental waste team have looked at the bin sizes and are satisfied that for the residential part of the scheme there, that there would be sufficient bin storage. In addition to the bins that are shown on the plans, they would also need to have the food waste bins, but those can also fit within the space that's been provided.
Thank you. Looks as though we're finished, members, so can I... Oh, Louise, sorry.
Can I just add one other thing? Mr Kylie was correct, the condition on page two of the annex report, it should read, shall only be used for purposes within use class B1A, so if we could amend that before the recommendation.
That's noted, thank you very much. Moving on to the revised recommendation. Permission be granted, subject conditions 1-5 on pages 25 to 27 of the agenda, and conditions 6 to 8 above, and informatives 1-5 on pages 27 and 28 of the agenda. Those in favour would please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Those against? Abstentions?
One.
Thank you. Item B1, WA2015, 1302, Littlemead, Church Lane, Hazelmead. Louise, yours again, please.
Thank you, Chairman. This one is for the erection of four dwellings, together with associated works, following the relevant demolition of an unlisted building in the conservation area. The site is located on the northern side of Church Lane. The site is currently occupied by a single-storey bungalow with amenity space to the front and side. An existing vehicular access is positioned in the south-eastern corner of the site, here. The site is located within Hazelmead Conservation Area. The railway line runs to the south-east of the application site. Pepperham House and bungalows are located to the west of the site, these are sheltered housing, and the detached property set in large grounds is located to the north of the site. As you can see from the aerial photograph, the site is surrounded by trees, particularly along the eastern boundary by the railway line. This first photo shows the front of the property, looking towards the existing entrance on Church Lane, and this photo is taken from within the site, looking to the rear of the property. These bottom two photographs are taken looking towards the site on Church Lane, from the north of Church Lane and from the south of Church Lane, just on the railway bridge. This first photograph is taken looking at the green, which is opposite the site, and St Bartholomew's Church in the background of the photograph. These next two photographs are taken both from within the site, and they are both looking towards Pepperham House, which is at a significantly higher land level than the application site. As you can see, this is the roof space of the house there. This final photograph is taken from within the grounds of Pepperham House, this is looking towards the bungalow, and I'm standing close to the boundary with the site. As you can see, there is a high boundary hedge, and you cannot see the roof of the bungalow because of the significant change in land bevels to the site below. The existing bungalow on the site is shown by the hatch line here, and this is obviously going to be removed to facilitate the proposal. Two pairs of semi-detached properties would be provided fronting Church Lane, and they would have amenity space to the rear, and this final one would have amenity space also to the side. The existing access would remain from Church Lane, as it is at the moment. The County Highway Authority have assessed the proposed access and the increase in vehicular movements, and are satisfied that they could be safely accommodated. Car parking would be in the form of a garage block for the four units, there'd be additional parking in front of the garages and to the side here. The car parking provision would meet our required standards in the Waverley Parking Guidelines. The buildings would have a front porch, gable and dormer features, they'd be faced with clay tiles on the roof and tile hanging on the front gable, and facing brickwork on the remainder of the elevations. Full details of the materials will be secured by a condition. Both the buildings are similar in design. Each building would contain two dwellings, one two-bedroom house and one three-bedroom These are the elevations and plans of the garage, the garage would be faced with timber boarding and slate roof. This drawing shows the street scene elevation, the existing wall would be retained along the front boundary, and the trees in the corners of the site, which are high-quality trees on the site, would be retained. If I could draw members' attention to the update sheet, which amends condition 11 to secure just samples of the hard-standing materials, reference to the external facing materials has been removed from this condition, as it is already covered by the earlier condition number seven. In conclusion, the site would replace an existing bungalow in the developed area of Hazelmead with four houses. It would have an acceptable design and appearance, is considered to preserve the character of the conservation area, and would have an acceptable impact on the surrounding neighbours. Furthermore, the proposed access and car parking provision are considered to be acceptable. The matters of technical judgment are the principle of the development, housing land supply, trees, highways issues, biodiversity and the effect on the SPAs. Matters of members' judgment this evening are the impact on visual amenity in the conservation area, the impact on residential amenity, and the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity and play space. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Louise. Members? Councillor King?
I wonder if I could ask Louise if she put back the aerial photograph of the site, please? That would be helpful. Before that, that one, that's it. Could you indicate on there, Louise, please, where the access is on to the highway?
So the access comes through just the outside.
That's what I thought. Thank you very much, indeed. What I cannot believe is that Surrey highways have made no comment whatsoever. I went round there this afternoon, because I had to go somewhere else, and that bend, as you go over that bridge, is the most dangerous blind bend ever, and I'm amazed they've not put display lines in or any recommendation, and I'm sorry, purely on those grounds, I cannot support this application. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, the current entrance to the site is there at the present time, I think, isn't it? Am I right in thinking that?
That's correct, yeah, it is in that position.
Stephen Mullin, sorry, councillor Mullin?
Both are correct. While I can understand councillor King's concern, the truth is that when you stand there, you actually have at least as good a view as you do when coming off Church Green to the south. I think if it's there at the moment, and I don't think there have been any incidents involving cars emerging from that site, then I find it hard to believe it would make a huge difference. Obviously, having four homes rather than one will make a difference, but they're unlikely to be funneling out any great numbers at the same time. So I'm glad to see that parking is included on-site. I'm not quite clear whether the current cover on the southern side is going to be retained or not, because when you drive down, you're not already aware of Littlemead being very obvious because of the tree and hedge cover, but is that indicating they're going to be cutting back the hedges, or what?
Louise?
Yes, some of the trees along the frontage are being removed as part of the proposal. They're all grade U or C-grade trees, that are not considered to be preventative to development. The main trees, which are in the corners of the site and along the eastern boundary, are all being retained, and they are all the more grade B and grade A trees.
Yeah, I mean, it is going to make quite a difference to the appearance of Church Green there, so it'll be got used to. I mean, I'm personally pleased to see this particular piece of land being used more intensively. I think on balance, when I understand councillor King's concerns, it doesn't give me quite the same level of concern, given the current use. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it then, members. Let's move to the revised recommendation, the permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 10. Page 27 of the agenda. be granted, subject to conditions one to ten and twelve seventeen on pages forty-nine to fifty-five of the agenda report, amended condition eleven as on the sheet above, and informative one to nine on pages fifty-five to fifty-seven of the agenda report. Those in favour, please show.
That's six.
That's it. Sorry, against? Thank you, sorry. So we move on to B2 WA 2015 1470, change views former police station to go the erection of extension to provide eight dwellings and office space class B1, following relevant demolition of an unlisted building, garage and cell block in a conservation area, through revision of WA 2014 2346 at the former police station, 46 West Street, Hazelmere. Louise, yours again.
Thank you Chairman. This site is located on the eastern side of West Street, on the corner with Chestnut Avenue. The site is currently occupied by a two-storey building, which is currently unoccupied but was previously used as Hazelmere Police Station. The site is located within Hazelmere Conservation Area and is within the town centre area. The police station is designated a building of local merit. The surrounding area is mixed in character with a number of other commercial and residential buildings surrounding the site. A public car park is located to the rear of the site here. This is the aerial photograph, and the police station is here on the corner. To the south-east is the police house. This has recently been granted planning permission to be converted into a self-contained residential dwelling with car parking from the rear and amenity space. This first photograph shows the front of the police station from West Street. This photograph is taken from the road which accesses the car park to the rear, and you can see the police station over the existing boundary fence. These bottom photographs are taken from inside the car park of the police station at present, looking towards the rear of the property. The cell block, which is here, is proposed to be removed as part of the proposal. This photograph is taken from the corner of Chestnut Avenue, just looking into the rear of the site where you can see the cell block there. This photograph is taken from within the site, looking towards the rear of the police house. And these final photographs are taken from within the site, looking towards the properties which front Chestnut Avenue. The main building would be extended to the rear, and there would be a glazed link, which is this small section in the middle of the plan, linking to four two-storey terraced dwellings to the rear. Amenity space is being provided for each of the houses to the rear of each house, and the two ground-floor flats which are proposed would have amenity space to the rear of each unit. Vehicular access to the site would remain as existing, with the main access to the south of the site, coming down by the south of the police house, serving eleven car parking spaces at the rear here. The front car parking area would remain as existing, providing four car parking spaces on the frontage. The County Highway Authority have assessed the proposal, and subject to conditions securing increased visibility, are satisfied that the proposed accesses would be acceptable in terms of highway safety. These plans show the internal conversion of the police house. The ground floor would be converted internally to provide two one-bedroom flats, one would be located here and one would be located here. In the centre of the ground floor, an office space would be provided, which links into the glazed extension which links-
Sorry, just to interrupt, you meant police station, police house is separate, isn't it?
Yeah, sorry, I meant police station, I didn't mean police house, I apologise. So yes, so there would be office in the centre of the police station, linking to the glazed link in the centre there, which are attached to the muse houses at the rear. At the first floor level, there would also be office space in the centre, with a one-bedroom flat here, and then a two-bedroom flat here. The four houses which would be provided to the rear would each be three-bedroom houses. Bin storage and cycle storage are incorporated into the design of the building and are at the front of each property. The front elevation of the police house would remain unaltered by the proposal, and the rear elevation to the main building would remain largely unaltered. There are obviously some changes with the removal of the cell block, and there are some changes to the fenestration, changing windows to doors, and all of these would match the existing materials and design on the existing building. The extension, which is here, is forming the muse houses, and this would be visible from the car park and the access road to the rear of the site. This side elevation shows the front of the muse houses which are positioned to the rear. This is the glazed flat-roofed link which links the main building with the new extension. The houses would have a pitched roof with front gable features. They would contrast with the main police station having a more modern appearance. The buildings would be faced with a mixture of grey bricks, timber cladding and render with roof tiles on the roof. Full details of these would be secured by condition.
Full details of what?
Full details of the exact material, so the samples would be secured by condition. These images show perspective drawings of the proposed muse houses, which is to the rear of the site. If I can draw members' attention to the update sheet, which outlines that a recent planning permission has been granted for the police house, and also outlines a representation that was received from the Hazelmere Society. It again outlines additional recommended conditions in relation to boundary treatments, in order to secure these prior to commencement, hours of construction, groundwater protection and visibility for the access. In conclusion, the site would facilitate the reuse of an existing vacant building in Hazelmere Town Centre. It is considered to have an acceptable design and appearance in relation to the building of local merit, and would preserve the character of the conservation area. It is considered to have an acceptable impact on the surrounding neighbouring occupiers. Furthermore, the proposed access and car parking provision are considered to be acceptable. The matters of technical opinion are the principle of development, housing land supply, highways, contaminated land, biodiversity and the effect on the SPA. The matters of judgement are the impact on the visual amenity, the building of local merit and Hazelmere Conservation Area, the housing mix and density, the impact on residential amenity, and the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity and place space. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much Louise. Members, it's all yours. councillor Mullin.
Well I think the feature that caused refusal last time was the unattractive rear extension, and this looks potentially a lot more interesting. When you say we're going to secure the exact appearance by condition, does that mean the council, the officers can basically require a certain degree of variation? I mean it's quite a varied elevation anyway, but the one thing I'm always worried about is anything which looks too samey. I mean are we going to be looking for different colour schemes separating the houses? Has any thought been given to that aspect?
Thank you. The applicant has proposed grey bricks and tiles to the roof, as well as timber cladding and render. Full details of the samples of these would be secured by condition. If members felt that there was a particular material that they would want to see shown somewhere on the building, then that is something they could impose if they felt it was necessary with regards to the appearance and impact on the conservation area.
No, I'm sorry, that's not the point. I mean clearly what materials are used is important. What I am concerned is that the thing shouldn't be completely uniform. If you, one of the recent developments which we were able to improve significantly was the Linden Homes development up on London Road, where we insisted upon a degree of variation in the frontage. It's that aspect that I'm concerned about. While I think the sections there are interesting, I would not like to see necessarily the same colour used, the same appearance, three identical units. To me it would be unfortunate, and what I'm trying to explore is whether we have any ability as a committee to insist that some colour scheme is used which shows some variation from unit to unit.
Hold on councillor King, wait for the officers for amendment.
Thank you. What we could do is put an informative on in relation to the materials condition, stating that we would expect, when they submit the details of the condition, that there should be a variation between the units, and that would work to secure that.
councillor King.
That's likely to take the wind out of my sails. I think that I like the extension, I think it's very well planned to be stuck on the back of a building, which I think is very insignificant, although I know it's listed as a building of merit, I don't share that view. But so I think by actually adding, that'd be controversial tonight, by adding something a bit different in this shape, you've got the contrast already, the new building is a contrast, in my view, with the old one, and I think it sits well with it. Thank you.
councillor Edwards.
Thank you Chairman. Can we look at the photographs to the rear of the property? Because that's the one I want, if you go back to that one. I mean that, you know, compared to those new units, is pretty much an eyesore actually, and I think what they're proposing is vastly superior to what I see before me this evening, and I'm quite happy with the development.
councillor Piper.
Thank you very much Chairman. The only element, I mean I actually think it's wonderful that last something is going to be hopefully happening to the police station, and I'm in favour of the new extension at the back, but I do have concerns about the use of grey brickwork. I don't think it's compatible with the vernacular in the area, and I think it goes slightly against the Hazelmere design statement.
The agent has chosen to use grey brickwork to pick up on, the current building is interspersed with a grey brick in it, so he has picked that up from the feature on the main dwelling. However, again, if you felt that grey brickwork wouldn't be appropriate, that is something that we could also add into the informative, which would then secure the materials as part of the detailed condition, and we could require that to not be grey, if you felt that that would be a reason to object to the application.
I think it's slightly unfortunate we haven't got the same quality of artist's impression for the extension as we have with the front. And I would want to make it clear that I'm perfectly happy with the general design of the extension, I think it is a pleasing contrast with this. But, and I think as a planning committee, we have one chance to put some influence on to how the thing appears. And in fact, if you, I'm glad that they've got different colours for the rear of the two, but the main length is of course going from the old building to the end, and it's that side which I say I am personally, and up to the committee whether they agree or not, a little uncomfortable that it being all the same. I would like to see a little variation, whether, to pick up councillor Piper's point, the grey brick was interspersed with brown brick, you can see both brown and grey there, I'd like to see that, at the very least, that interchange continued. If you like, I dislike boring buildings or long stretches of the same colour, and I think if the committee is with me on this general point, then I would like to recommend that informative is put in, requesting some variation, and to pick up councillor Piper's point, that the grey brickwork is broken up in some way. But if we don't say anything now, it'll go just forward as it is, this is our chance to be protective, if you like, of the general impact of the appearance of this new building, the idea of which is fine, but the colour of it matters too to me, and I think, I feel sufficiently strongly about it to make these comments, and if my colleagues agree, then I would like to recommend that informative in that format is put forward.
Yeah, okay councillor Mullin, I think before I turn to councillor Elizabeth Sims.
Thank you Chairman. I think on the basis of what councillor Mullin's just said, I personally would recommend members vote on the inclusion of that informative now. If there is still disagreement as to whether that goes in or not, then the alternative is for you to indicate to us that members would like to be involved in the discharge of that condition, and when we receive the materials and start to discuss the matter with the applicants, and we have done this before, you'll probably be, you may recall this on other occasions, we will be in contact with members and invite your views on the information coming forward and try to agree consensus in that way, that may pick up on other concerns you have, and that may be slightly more inclusive. Thank you Chairman.
Fine, thank you. councillor Mullin would you like to propose the informative and the second, please? Those in favour of the informative as outlined by Elizabeth Sims?
That's the one that brings it back to members.
Yeah, brings it back to members to be considered. Elizabeth.
Sorry, sorry members, firstly, the informative, I think it was tabled, that there would be variety in this scheme, but also that it not be predominantly grey. I don't know whether you want to take a vote on including that as it is, and if that is you're happy with that, you may not want the alternative to be involved in the rest of the discharge of conditions.
Yeah, sorry, you said?
If I can propose the informative, that we wish there to be variation in the colour scheme on the long axis of the extension, and in particular that the grey brick is broken up.
Fine, thank you, we have a-
I think I have a second in councillor Piper.
We have indeed. Those in favour of that informative?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Those against? Abstentions?
One.
Thank you. So we will include that informative, thank you very much.
And should I propose separately that members are informed and allowed to give input into what comes forward from the applicant?
Sorry, I thought that was what we had voted on.
Chairman, I think in addition to the informative, I think what councillor Mullin suggested, that notwithstanding that informative, when the details do come in, that we still share the details with members and seek their views, which we're happy to do if that's what the committee would like.
Thank you very much. councillor Hes.
So just to make it absolutely clear, we get a chance to see the materials before the thing gets built. Lovely.
councillor King.
One last question. It's not on the plan, and I can't find it anywhere, but is the fence between the car park and the rear of the building to be retained? The drawings look as if it's not, but I'm not-
They haven't explicitly said the proposed boundary treatment in the plans, but we have recommended a condition requiring full details of the boundary treatment be submitted and approved, and we would expect high-quality boundary treatment along that boundary.
Thank you very much Louise. Let's move to the recommendation then, please. Recommendation, subject to conditions one to sixteen on pages eighty to eight-six of the agenda, additional conditions seventeen to twenty-three are set out in the update sheet, and informative one seventeen on pages eighty-six to eighty-eight of the agenda, plus the additional informative that we have just voted on, may have those in favour of permission to grant.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you all very much.